Welcome to your City Commission meeting. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. In accordance with the Kansas Open Meetings Act, the meeting can be viewed live on Channel 2 and via Facebook Live. The public is encouraged to view the meeting using one of these options. The Leavenworth City Commission meeting is open to the public with limited seating capacity. To mitigate the spread of COVID-19 face coverings and social distancing is required to attend the meeting. Refer to the Agenda packet on the city website on how to reserve a seat and/or submit questions. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 p.m. and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. First item on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance, followed by silent medication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for
First item on the agenda, consideration of the previous meeting minutes. Have you reviewed the minutes? Are there any questions or concerns?
No.
If not, would you entertain a motion?
I move to approve minutes from January 12, 2021, regular meeting.
Second.
As we moved and seconded, please begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
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 And I vote aye as well. Motion carried five to one, five to zero. Second consideration ordinance is the next item on the agenda. Ordinance 8157 Industrial Revenue Bonds Luxury Imports.
City Clerk Carla Williamson will handle this item.
Thank you. Mayor and Commissioner, this item was placed on first consideration at the January 12th meeting and reviewed at that time. Since that reading, there have just been a couple minor changes that our attorney made to it regarding the ownership to reflect Ray Holding LLC and remove reference to Ann Or Ted A-Ray Inc. And then in Section 2, the interest rate of 5% was added. It was left blank because they didn't quite note at that time. And shall mature no later than the year of 2026 was changed to 2025. Other than that, there are no other changes to the ordinance. It's ready for roll call.
Thank you. And any other questions on this ordinance or concerns? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Griswold?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Passed five to zero. Next item, public comment. This is items not listed on the agenda or receipt of petitions. Can you please state your name and address? Any emails received by the public for public comment on non-agenda items will be read at this time. Is there any public comment that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Ordinance. Next item is review ordinance related to face mask requirements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioner. On November 19, 2020, the City Commission enacted ordinance number 8154 to establish a local face mask requirement ordinance. Ordinance 8154 expires at 11:59 on January 31, 2021. The ordinance was modeled on language included in the executive order of Kansas Governor Laura Kelly. The initial draft ordinance was reviewed at the July 21, 2020 City Commission meeting, with the Commission taking no action at that time. The Commission again reviewed the matter at the November 17, 2020 study session, indicating a desire to consider the draft presented in July, which led to the meeting on November 19. Last week, at the January 19 study session, the Commission provided a consensus to consider the face mask requirement at tonight's meeting in advance of the expiration of ordinance 8154. The matter is before the Commission tonight for consideration. A new draft ordinance is attached, and any action on a new ordinance would require a Commission action. The Commission would have to indicate, should the Commission elect to extend the ordinance 8154 with an amended ordinance, it would require the Commission to select a date and time at which it would expire. In order to enact it tonight, the Commission would also have to deem this an emergency ordinance, so as not to have the two separate readings. The ordinance tonight is also modeled on the Kansas Governor's executive order. There have been some changes, some administrative cleanup language that the city attorney can go over, but it is, again, modeled off Governor Laura Kelly's executive order. We do have both written comments and a couple members of the audience here tonight who reserved to speak on this item.
Okay. How about we begin with the written comments?
Okay. Do we want to set any, on the written or oral comments, any time?
I think they should be set to two minutes apiece. Depending on how many there are, two minutes is good, I think.
Okay, so we can do that. And we do have five comments, so the city clerk and myself will alternate reading the comments. So I'll start, limited to two minutes. The first one is from Mr. Griff Martin, 1512 Cherokee. "I spoke with a lady a few weeks back, and she expressed that she was fine with our local economy suffering due to the mask mandate. We cannot be fostering this kind of thinking if we want to grow and thrive as a community. If we sincerely care about our business owners in Leavenworth, we must show them by giving them a chance to decide how they want to run their respective businesses and allow them to vote on the issue of a mask mandate. Thank you for your consideration."
The next one is from Mr. William Bentley at 1912 Evergreen Street. It says, "Last year, you held an emergency commission meeting without any consideration to the public you serve. You understand what I'm referring to. At that meeting, you imposed a mask mandate for the city of Leavenworth that would run until January 26, 2021. This ordinance, 8154, made failure to wear a mask a crime with imposed penalties. I found this action by the Commission offensive, to say the least. Do you not believe that the fine people of the city cannot reasonably understand the coronavirus, whether or not it is serious to them and their loved ones, and make their own decisions based on the knowledge they have been given? Wait, the Commission never presented any information to the public on the coronavirus, did they? Maybe that would have been a better option at the meeting to publish factual information about the coronavirus for the people of Leavenworth to read and digest, but that is water under the bridge now. After your so-called emergency meeting, a large group of constituents organized and have now submitted to the Commission over 800 verified signatures opposing the ordinance. You have 20 days to adopt your ordinance." The Leavenworth City Constitutional Protest Protection, I'm sorry, Protection Ordinance, which effectively repealed ordinance 8154 and mandates that any future mask requirements must be submitted to the electors of the city of Leavenworth prior to implementation. Your commission meeting on January 26, 2021, to vote on extending your original ordinance, thus ignoring their hard work, will be another slap in the face of your constituents and will be remembered come election time. Willfully ignoring our ordinance and the 800-plus voters who signed the petition will result in further action. I hope this email and many other findings, many others find each of you..."
We got the gist.
And for any of these that we don't finish, they will be fully recorded in the record. The entirety of the emails are provided to the Commission. The next one is from Karen Rich, 3105 207th Street. "I wish to address you and my fellow men and women honorably and respectfully. Please hear me. The ordinance 8154 is perpetuating fear based on lies and propaganda put forth by media, service corporations, and unfortunately, our service corporations acting as governments and healthcare officials. Please read this article before making a decision." And then there's a hyperlink to an article. "Illness and death are part of life. COVID-19 is not the crisis we have led to believe. If you get the so-called virus, you have a 99.49% chance of survival. These, there are proven successful treatments. Has the actual virus been isolated and proven to exist? PCR testing does not provide a true diagnosis of illness. The test inventor stated that the test was for lab use only and is not a diagnostic tool. Virtually no one who is asymptomatic has the live virus, but when you run the test at a cycle threshold over 30, meaning you amplify the viral RNA more than 30 times, you end up with a positive test even if the virus is inactive and non-infectious. In other words, you receive false positives. So then the cases reported out are not true in the definition of illness. The vaccine is not a cure and is completely experimental. Why would anyone take a brand-new biological agent which has not been proven safe or efficacious? Are you aware of the unknown risks associated with this vaccine, that it may cause infertility? Do you know what an antibody-dependent enhancement reaction is? Did you know the vaccine does not prevent transmission of said COVID-19? Are you aware that the pharma companies are immune from liability if this experimental vaccine causes harm? Did you know that the CDC is a service corporation, holding 20 patents on vaccine technologies, making them, in the very least, suspect in their motivation and responses to handling illness in the American population?" And that is the end of my two minutes.
Any more?
Carla, we have two more.
This one is from Randolph Oberlin, 1015 South 21st Street, Leavenworth. "Seems to me that all of the measures we were told we had to do were ineffective and unjustified. After eight weeks of mandatory mask ordinances, the city of Leavenworth County, that we have hundreds more infected each week, seems like for over a year now, the health experts have been telling us that masks, social distancing, and restrictions on businesses would stop the virus from spreading. It doesn't work as advertised. We are now well into insanity territory. You know, doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. Around 7% of the population of the county has been infected, spread over 12 and 1/2 months. The number that have died from complications with the virus is 43. That's about 0.05% of the county, again, spread over a year. During the same period, about 3% of those who tested positive were hospitalized. This is all since the 1st of January 2020. It doesn't sound like much of a pandemic. The mask ordinance should not be extended. It does not accomplish anything useful other than harassing our residents. This should be, this should all be voluntary for individuals and businesses."
The final one we have is Jamison Deal, 1415 Ottawa Street. "Mayor and City Commissioners, this ordinance is based of biased and unscientific information. There have been multiple studies done by which found the masks do not protect the user nor another person. If you truly care about the truth, then go seek it for yourselves. Dr. Fauci even said they don't work, but changed his tune due to political pressure. We are all adults, grown-ups, if you will. The people of Leavenworth, nor else, anywhere else, have the ability to choose for themselves if they want to need or need to wear a mask. It is not under the power or authority of your council members to protect ourselves from ourselves. Instead, it may behoove you to work on things that actually matter, such as the incredible amount of crime committed in this city, the fact that when you report your car got stolen, the city police said they can't do anything for 24 hours. I have family in law enforcement and also talked to KCK police, and all have agreed that this determination was B period S period. Based on 2018 data from citidata.com, Leavenworth's crime rate is higher than 93% of all cities in the United States. For being a city of only 35,000-ish, in 2018, there was 100 cars stolen, 783 thefts, 247 burglaries, and 270 assaults. When a statement is given to the police and they butcher the statement so bad that it is unusable to describe the perpetrator as it is, then you try to fix it, no officer calls or shows up. There needs to be some serious overhaul of how the city police operate and need to be taught how to enforce laws. Back to masks. We have been doing just fine without them, and I even found a study done by a statistician that found counties and cities with mask mandates and lockdowns had a higher virus transmission rate than those without. It was around..."
Thank you, sir. Is that it for the written comments?
Yep.
Yes. I understand there may be a couple people who want to speak. Would you like to speak now on this issue? You're welcome to come to the podium. Give your name and address, please.
My name's April Cromer. I live in Leavenworth, Kansas. Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to address the concerns by citizens. I'm not going to provide you statistics. I think everyone in here knows that there are, we have about a 99.995 survival rate with COVID-19. But what I do want to discuss is the fact that, what's going on with our businesses? So you know that there's many people in this city who would like to have their voices heard. I know I've emailed each and every one of you, and I haven't received a response back, actually on three occasions, except for one Commissioner. So thank you for that, Commissioner Wilson. So there's about 844 people that have signed this petition here, and this has been circulated. The reason why this was circulated was because there's a lot of people who believe that the mask, the mask mandate was unconstitutional. But more importantly, what I would like to ask you folks here is, why did you wait until after the election? Why didn't you give a 24-hour notice to, to the citizens? And I don't appreciate being mocked, Mr. Griswold. I don't appreciate that.
Being what?
I don't appreciate being mocked. This is very serious, so...
Go ahead and finish what you have to say.
Yes, so...
We're not going to carry on a conversation.
Yeah, thank you. So I want to know those questions, and there's 844 people who want to know that also. These are your constituents. You are elected officials. So whether you agree with it or not, there's people that do that are concerned. There's business owners that are being, that are being affected by this. We've had, what, six to seven businesses that have been shut down? I'm not a business owner, so I can't relate to that. I'm a privileged retired federal employee, so I don't understand that. But I do shop here. I like to shop locally. And I've also noticed on Facebook, a lot of people are being harassed. We've seen, circulating this petition, what we've seen, we've had a lot of people who, they want their voices heard, they don't want the mask mandate, they want to be able to make decisions for themselves. They don't want to be harassed by people who are maskers that tell us, people that don't like wearing masks, that we're wrong. We're not wrong.
Okay, thank you.
Good, Madam Mayor, I would like to understand what she said, what she directed at me. What did she say?
She said she did not appreciate being mocked.
When did I, okay, very good. Also, for, I'd like to ask the Ms. Cromer whether she is a resident of the city of Leavenworth or Leavenworth County?
Oh, she didn't, yeah, she didn't give her address.
Well, is she, is she a resident of the city?
I'm a resident of Leavenworth County.
Thank you.
But I am a patron of Leavenworth.
Very good. Just wanted to ask that.
That's all, that's all. Okay.
Any more? I think we have one more.
Okay, yes. Is there another person that would like to speak?
I can't. I already left.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you speaking to me?
Yes, would you like to speak?
I wouldn't mind speaking.
Give your name and address, please.
Did you print out my comments?
I did not. Do you?
Give me a second.
Okay.
And I'll get to my email. This is the intel bag, you know?
May I just say, my name is Peggy Bear. I'm at 1917 Westwood Drive. I'm not a native, but I've been here 30 years. So I do care about everybody and everybody's opinion here. I do understand, I've listened. But I want to point something out. I want to just point out, like, maybe how this is working. Just today, the Health Department put out its new numbers. It's 45. That's down from 111. Now, why is it at that? It appears that the mask protocols are working, since the numbers are finally way down from the holidays, okay? This is the best news we've had in months. My concern with a lack of a mask mandate is that the opposition says that masks don't work. Masks do work, as demonstrated by the numbers that have plummeted since the holidays. Why did they not immediately go down? Because of family gatherings where people ignored the COVID-19 safety protocols. This impacted people in my own extended family. One of my in-laws' families got together for Christmas, all of them got COVID, including the 82-year-old patriarch, who now has double pneumonia. It's upsetting. In our own Home Depot, where my husband works here in Leavenworth, the Home Depot Corporation here did its own research and soul-searching and had its employees wear masks and social distance and use hand sanitizer and made deep cleanings, and it made a big impact. But they couldn't force the people who came in to do anything until you guys had a mandate. And then when you had a mandate, things got even better. But not everybody cooperated, but most people did. That's just, they just needed a little push. So my feeling is, is if we've got stoplights and if we've got drunk-driving laws, that a mask mandate really works. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. I'm sorry, we've got so many other people that need to speak on another issue tonight. We wanted to just make sure everybody has a chance, we didn't want to cut anybody off. Now, the item that we need to, to do is review the ordinance, ordinance related to the mask, face mask requirements. And what I'll do is go around and just get some comments from my fellow commissioners on this topic first. Commissioner Griswold, you have some comments?
Yeah, I ask for your patience, because I've got a, I do have a statement to put this situation in context. It'll take about three minutes probably, maybe a little bit longer, but obviously, we're considering whether to approve a new or modified ordinance requiring the use of face masks slash coverings within the city. Passed last November 19 at a special meeting, the purpose of the first ordinance, ordinance number 8154, was to address the rapidly rising rates of COVID-19 infection and the number of active COVID-19 cases, deaths, and hospitalizations. During the meeting, I pointed out that based on Leavenworth County COVID-19 metrics over two-week period, 30 October to 16 November, there had been an increase of 162 cases, representing a 182% increase, and an increase of eight deaths, representing a 57% increase. Hospitalizations had increased from 78 to 84. Additionally, I pointed out that on 16 November, the community test percentage, that is, the positive 14-day moving average was 16.03, and daily case counts reported per day, based on a 14-day moving average, was 29.07 cases. These metrics were a concern, not only to the City Commission, but also of the county's health officer, when he updated the Board of County Commissioners on November 18, the day before our special meeting. County health officer told the Board of County Commissioners that "community spread within Leavenworth County is escalating," and quote, "It's everywhere," end quote, "we have to do something different," unquote. At the time, my interpretation of his assessment was that he was informing elected officials at public health action to break the ever-escalating cycle of community spread. At the very least, flattening the curve was critical. So with respect to COVID-19 metrics, where do we stand now on the 26th of January 2021? Since late November 2020, the trend on the community positive test percentage has been downwards, decreasing from a high of 16.3 to 7.61 yesterday, 25 January. There was a blip upwards for two weeks in early January, probably due to more people being infected over the Christmas holidays. Daily case counts calculated as a 14-day moving average were reported yesterday at 24.86, a slight improvement of the number from the 16th of November county COVID-19 report of 29.07. Forty-three people in the county have passed away from COVID-19, which is an increase of 21, a 96% increase from the county's report last November 16. Most encouraging was the report of 45 new positive community cases, which is the lowest number in months, and a decrease of 52 from last Friday's report. We will have to see whether the county reports tomorrow and whether this positive development continues. I hope it does. So I ask the question, what factors have contributed to these relatively positive trends of COVID-19 infection within the county? Certainly, the county health office having effective program of testing and follow-up for citizens, testing positive is one factor. Another was all six school districts implementing health protocols and different methods of instruction. A third factor were citizens taking responsibility to do everything they can to prevent the spread of the disease, frequent washing campaigns, avoiding large groups, maintaining social distancing, and wearing masks. And finally, I contend that the city's ordinance requiring the wearing of masks in public, along with similar ordinances in effect in Lansing and Tonganoxie, is another factor contributed to the county's improvement in dealing with the pandemic. At the very least, a man or woman possessing logical thinking skills and good judgment would not discount the role of mask ordinances in the two largest cities in the county, plus Tonganoxie, the fourth largest, in helping to push the curve downwards over the last two months. Indeed, at our special meeting on November 19, I mentioned one of the gold standard studies conducted on the efficacy of masks by the KU Institute for Policy and Research, which had two top-line findings. One, a 50% reduction in the spread of COVID-19 in Kansas counties that had a mask mandate compared to those without. And two, masks do not eliminate COVID-19, but they significantly slow the spread of the disease. My bottom line that I expressed back in November has not changed. We, as elected leaders of the city, always have a responsibility to lead, but this responsibility is most important during crises. Make no mistake about it. While the trend lines in the county are encouraging, we, like the nation and state, are still in the midst of a public health crisis, the likes of which we haven't experienced in the last 100 years. Aside from the Commission's consideration of the stats, studies, and professional expertise relating to this crisis, we must and will do everything we can to protect the health, welfare, and safety, at least I will, of our neighbors, friends, teachers, healthcare, and other essential workers, and all our fellow citizens. Requiring masks in the public space to slow down and arrest the spread of the disease is one of the tools in the public health toolbox available to the City Commission. As a 30-year Army veteran, I viewed the employment of this tool back in November, much as I would have in employing a reserve force to bolster the front lines. My experience and judgment tell me that the Commission's decision to commit the reserve, that is, requiring the wearing of masks in public, was responsible and efficacious thing to do in our public health battle against COVID-19. Now is not the time to rescind or let the ordinance we passed in November lapse. We must reinforce success until such time the population of our city have received enough vaccinations to significantly reduce at least below 4% the test positivity rate and cutting at least in half to 12 or below the daily case counts per day. For these reasons, I will vote yes to approve a new modified mask ordinance for the city of Leavenworth. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Price?
Thank you. My goal is to get back to normal. We live in a community, and our personal choices do affect the community at large. Masks are not the universal lecture to stop COVID, but I do believe they have a strong mitigating effect on the spread of COVID. 100% of the medical professionals I've spoken with, these include MDs, RNs, nurse practitioners, are all in agreement on the need to wear masks. Many other jurisdictions throughout our area, our country, and around the world have put in much stricter measures, closing of businesses, limiting businesses, et cetera. We are not doing that. Wearing of a mask for a finite time is not a draconian measure for businesses. It is for the greater good. Deaths are not the only index to justify masks. Hospital admissions and space limitations is also a part of the equation. Some say we've lost 43 people. That's a very small percentage. Let's say we have an intersection in town that we're planning an overpass, a four-way intersection, but we don't have the overpass built yet, but it's 40 mile an hour four-way intersection, we don't have any stop signs. In the last 11 months, there's 43 fatality accidents there. I think it behooves us, or the... I think it behooves us, or the police department and the city, to at least put in a stop sign to slow down the traffic. People may scream, say, "Hey, that's my right. It hinders my right to drive fast." But a mask is that stop sign until an overpass is built. The overpass is the vaccine. It is being built. It's coming. I've had my first shot. I suspect some people here have had their first vaccination too. But that's where we need to be. Wearing a mask is the responsible thing to do. It's the Christian thing to do. And as President Trump even said on July 20th, 2020, it is the patriotic thing to do. In my 20 years of elected office in Leavenworth, I do not believe this will be the most consequential vote I've made. There have been other votes that have had longer-term consequences. But although not the most consequential vote I've made, I believe it will be my most defining vote, as well as the most defining vote of each member of this commission. I'm saddened how this has divided this community, and we're better than this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ian Hart, can you have a comment?
Yes, I do. Thank you all for being here. It is unfortunate that this has become a divisive issue. That was never the intent of the mask ordinance. It's about the health and safety of the people. It is a public health crisis. And I had several physicians reach out to me over time, and actually, they sort of ripped me apart a little bit, because they are the medical doctors. They are the ones in the field that we need to be listening to. And that's who, and I think Commissioner Price, you said as well, you've been talking to some people in the medical field. And I know we always commend them in everything, but they're the ones that know the answers. They're not political. They're basically, this is a health crisis. This isn't a zoning issue or street maintenance or anything. They're the experts, and I have to go with what they say. I know we're in phase two. We don't have as many vaccines as I sure would like to have had by now, but they're coming in. And masks do help slow the spread. And it's just, you just need to be patient a little bit longer and to get through this, and we can get back to a normalcy. Like I said, it's a public health crisis. Public health crisis. That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Lawson?
Last month, the majority of the commission made the decision to enforce the mask mandate in hopes to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. Since the mask mandate, we've seen cases fluctuate, going up and down. One week, cases are low. Next week, COVID cases are high. Currently, COVID cases are high. And currently, COVID cases are low, and hope that they remain low. But tomorrow, it could be high. This mandate has created a division amongst our community. I'm not anti-mask. I encourage people to wear your mask, practice social distancing, and follow good hygiene practice. But we have to be responsible for our own action. Before this mandate, 90% of the people I seen in the community wore their mask. After this mask mandate, still 90% of the people in the community wore their masks. It's because of the choices that they choose to do. Of course, I said before, I think this is unenforceable, and I will continue to think that this is unenforceable. I hope everyone do take the responsibilities and do what they need to do. And it also bothers me that there is exemptions for individuals participating in recreational activities, but when it comes to church gatherings, the pastor is on the pulpit preaching and has to wear his mask. I do not understand that. That doesn't make sense to me. So, with that, I am opposed to extending this mask mandate.
Thank you, sir.
Point of war, Mr. Commissioner Wilson. Regarding the stats from, and what I said is true. So, it hasn't been like up and down over the last six weeks. There's been a steady trend downwards, decreasing the community positive test percentage from a high of 16.3 to 7.61 yesterday. There was a blip upwards for two weeks in early January, probably due to more people being infected over the Christmas holidays. But I just want to make sure, it hasn't been like this. It's been a pretty steady decline, which is good news. And I mentioned that in my comments, and I just want to just clarify that. And I think that's a good thing, and due to a number of factors that I covered in my presentation.
Thank you, sir. Well, there has been a steady decline. And I know that the state disaster declaration is extended to March 31st. This is temporary. We have the vaccines coming. Hopefully, they're coming quicker rather than slower. And so, hopefully, we will get to that point. I'm not asking anybody to wear a mask for the rest of your life. That's, this is just a temporary thing. For those who support this herd immunity, that everybody should just go out and expose yourself to the virus. That's why the virus is mutating. As a lab technologist, I know this. I know that the more the virus is spread around, the more it mutates. And that is common knowledge among anyone who works with that. The hospital crowding, I've had to wait for over a month to get an echo for my heart problem. I haven't got it yet. I might have a heart attack tonight if I keep going. And that's due to COVID. And they talk about 99% people have a chance of survival from this. If you look at 1% of Leavenworth County people, which is 81,758, 1% of that is 817 people that would die if this was, if there were no masks used and if it's just the general spread of the virus. Half of that is in the city of Leavenworth. I just wanted to say to the stuff that's being spread around about us not responding to anybody. I know that I responded to April Cromer on July 15th, July 21st, twice, and September 10th. And I actually have been asking for a mask mandate for several months. So, this isn't anything new for me. And this was, of course, before I was mayor, but this is still nothing new for me. As long as Fort Leavenworth and our county health officer and our physicians recommend a mask mandate, I go by their advice. And I would like to see the mask mandate extended to March 31st, when the state disaster declaration is extended. That's my opinion, and I will open it up to any other discussion, Mr. Kramer, Mr. Waters.
No, we were just going to ask if there was an extension mentioned that'd be a date, which you just did, so that's all.
You made my point, Mayor Bowder, that I was going to say about the governor signing that extension yesterday, where the state emergency declaration was extended to March 31st. You don't necessarily need to choose that date, but that is a point I just wanted to make out that that's when the that's when the emergency declaration was extended to. And that was a vote by the Senate and the House, and then signed by the governor.
Madam Mayor, if I may, could I ask the chief, I see the chief police is here. You know, some of the arguments against it, this is an undue burden upon our police force. Can you tell us what your officers have gone through over the last 65, 70 days, however long it's been?
Yes, sir. Madam Mayor, commissioners, the police department took up the issue of the mask mandate when it was adopted. We generally have been in an educational mode throughout the course of the last few months. Most of that was as a result of, I think, some general confusion in the community. And by that, I mean the governor passed some mandates and issued some orders. Then the county opted out of some of those orders, and then individual cities within the county passed individual mandates. So, I think initially, for about the seven to 10-day period, there was some confusion, while I thought we were supposed to follow the governor's orders of the county, that sort of thing. So, I think we worked our way through that. All told, in about the last 60 days, the police department have probably dealt with somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 to 18 complaints about mask violations potentially. We're quite capable of handling that. That was not a significant load. I think people saw in the newspaper, we issued one citation to a person. The business, it was a business owner that called the police. The customer would not wear the mask. They asked him to leave. He wouldn't leave. And then they felt it was necessary for the police to come out and assist them. And then ultimately, we issued a citation. That's working its way through the municipal court system. It's not been an undue burden on the police department. I kept track of it for about the first seven to 10 days. I told my staff to do that. But other than that, we've settled in and dealt with it on a case-by-case basis. And that's sort of my general assessment of the mask mandate. And I don't anticipate that changing, if you extend it or not.
What is the majority of your complaints normally come from? Is it businesses?
So, initially, it was businesses. We got a couple of complaints about businesses not enforcing it. When we would have conversations about the ordinance, we made sure that people had a full understanding that just because a person doesn't have a mask on, that is not necessarily a violation, given that there are exemptions contained in that. So, we worked our way through that. I think we had a couple of complaints about some teenage kids working in the drive-thru that had the mask on but didn't have it up. Some health clubs, you know, if they were working out on the treadmill, if they were standing there lifting weights, that sort of thing. So, it kind of went that way. And we dealt with them on a case-by-case basis and only felt compelled in one occasion to issue a citation simply for outright defiance. And again, that's working its way through the court system.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bowder, I support your recommendation or your idea to have a new or modified order requiring the wearing of masks or face coverings in the public in the city of Leavenworth through the 31st of March.
Okay.
I'd like to state a couple things, a couple additional things. I know some, it's been said on this commission last time, you know, if you're afraid of this, stay home. Well, everyone doesn't have the option of staying home. Think of that single mother who has a job. Can she just stay home, say, "I'm afraid of COVID," and stay home and not have any income? Other people have to go to the grocery store and go different places. That option's not always open. And once again, the mask is to prevent you from getting it from me. The example I used once, before we even had a mask ordinance, was I took a lighter here, and I lit it, had my mask down. I blew it out, just like you blow out a candle or a match. I put on my mask. You cannot blow it out. I'm not saying this is going to catch everyone, but if I sneeze or cough, the aerosol from my mouth and my nose is in this mask, and it prevents it from going over to Commissioner Griswold or Mayor Bowder. But if someone doesn't have a mask on and they sneeze, it will come through this mask. It doesn't save me from you, but it saves you from me. That's what we're trying to get. And I think people are trying to flip it, saying, "It's proven that the mask won't prevent you from getting it." I don't disagree with that. But it helps, it mitigates me from passing it to you, and I don't know if I have it unless I'm tested every hour on the hour. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this topic?
So, my question is, speaking on behalf of the churches pastors, I still don't understand how you can be, there's an exemption if you participate in recreational activities. If we're playing basketball, I'm face-to-face with you. We're not required to wear a mask. Or if we're sitting at a restaurant, I can take my mask down if I'm sitting with my family. If you're at church with your family, you're still required to have your mask on. And if the pastor's preaching, he still has to have his mask on. And he's probably 20, 30 feet away from the congregation. That doesn't make sense to me. And going to church every single Sunday and witnessing this and being in the position to speak on the behalf of the churches, I mean, I'm using my voice now, so.
I, so Commissioner Wilson, would you like to see where us to talk about or discuss?
Ask Mr. Waters about this.
Yeah, I mean, I understand where Commissioner Wilson is coming from, particularly in terms of the pastor. Nobody else but the pastor. If he's 10, 15, 20, 30 feet away, I would at least be willing to consider that as an exemption on this order that's coming up. But I certainly wouldn't mind hearing from our city attorney as to whether we can do that.
Sure. David Waters, city attorney, maybe a few different thoughts. And I apologize if these aren't even quite the exact order that the questions were raised. First of all, this is based on the executive orders of the Kansas governor. She's issued two executive orders on this topic, as you know, and they're both substantially the same. In neither of those situations was there an exemption for religious services or churches on that. So, the first part of this is that that was a statewide order that, of course, then could be exempted out by counties. And so, we modeled it on that order. That being said, because the statewide governor's order is not in effect, and this is your own ordinance, should the city commission desire to do something along those lines, I certainly believe you have the power to do that, to craft such an exemption. I was not involved, of course, in the drafting of the governor's order. You know, my impressions or discussions would be that the reasons for exemptions for physical activity had to do with health and respiratory issues and sweating and masks getting wet and some of the issues that go along that. I'm sorry, I'm not a virologist, so I can't speak intelligently necessarily about that issue. And as for us eating and drinking, I think the simple reason for that exemption was that it is physically impossible to eat and drink with a mask on, whereas it is possible to do so to speak with a mask on. So, I think that is some of the reasons. But if that is the commission's direction that you would like to go, we certainly could. A couple of caveats on that. Your current ordinance does expire on January 31st. We do not have draft language on such an additional exemption. You're ready to go tonight. You know, we could spend some time perhaps crafting one. I'm generally hesitant to craft language on the fly that way. Another option could be, if that's the will of the council, is you could always do this and direct staff to bring, you know, a second set of amendments at a next meeting for consideration if you want, so you don't lose the opportunity to extend this one, if that's what you so wish. So, there are a couple of different
So, what you're saying is we could pass it, and then we could change the, put an exemption in there? No?
No, I'm saying that if tonight, if you wanted to, you could certainly pass this extension as it is, direct staff to present at the next commission meeting another amendment that revises what you may have just approved tonight with an additional exemption. And therefore, then, that at least gets you past the January 31st date, so you don't have the mask ordinance expiring while staff works on language. Or, again, perhaps we could spend some time, if you wanted to, you know, draft something right now. I probably would not recommend that. But those are options that are certainly available to you. Or, of course, your option is to pass as-is, or make any other various amendments that you might like.
Okay, now I'm confused.
We're voting on this right now, just the extending of it.
Just the extension of it. And then the next time, for the next meeting.
I mean, that would be, you would have, I mean, there would have to be at least a consensus, I think, of from the commission to direct staff to bring you something at the next meeting or the planning session, or would be if you wanted to. Or, I mean, to give you all of your options, you know, you could not take any action on this tonight, direct staff to bring a different ordinance, knowing that it would come after expiration, and then you would have, you know, have a gap period where there was no mask ordinance in effect.
Yeah, and rather just go ahead and extend it, if we need to make a change.
Commissioner Wilson and I have expressed an indication or probably a preference for the one exemption for the pastor or who's ever in charge of the religious service. I think that's where you were coming from.
Well, yeah, and like I said, so we're going to vote on this.
I understand that, but I mean, in terms of if we're going to direct the city manager to do anything next week, I mean, we have to have a consensus. So, I've only heard himself and me, you know, express a support for
I'd be supportive of that.
And we, this would expire, the current one would expire Sunday night, and we do have a meeting Tuesday, the study session. We can have a special meeting, so we don't have to wait till the 9th. We could bring something back to you on the 2nd, indicating. And just to be clear, you know, please provide a clear consensus. If we do have a third, I think we do have three now, that we'd like to look at language that would allow for an exemption based on distance?
Yeah, or is it, you know, is it no masks in church required at all? Is it for those that are preaching or speaking with a certain distance level? I think we'd want some direction from the commission on what type of language. I don't need you to craft language yourself. We could do that. But I think we need some direction on what it is you'd like to do, if that's the direction you want to go.
Because do we just want, like, the minister or the people with the reading?
I would like to have Commissioner Wilson, since he's a minister, work with him on that.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's just, it's just real difficult to hear a pastor preach.
Yes.
It is, I know.
I mean, you know, they're up there like 30, 45 minutes.
But they are a long ways away, at least in our church they are.
Do they use, quite often, they use a microphone now, do they not?
Personal microphones for ours, yeah.
I am a very, very strong believer in the First Amendment and all of the amendments. And I don't think we're restricting religious freedom, requiring a mask. I would just ask that we really think this through and not do it just right off the cuff. If we establish some some special classes here, then, you know, I think it may take a lot away from, you know, the mask ordinance. I, you know, we have time. I will seek out the ministerial alliance. I know I've had a couple pastors write me and contact me after we passed it, and they said, "Thank you. We practice social distancing and mask-wearing even while I'm preaching." So, I don't think that's a universal thought among the churches. And so I think it's incumbent upon all of us to think about that, not make a decision yes or no at this point. So, you know, I'm concerned about doing a special class for certain groups and it goes on and...
Well, I'd like to see what others are doing too, because I know our, we're part of the archdiocese in Kansas City, and our priests do what they tell you to do.
And what does your priest do?
They wear a mask.
Yeah, wears a mask, yeah.
Did you?
I think the chief is...
Yes, sir.
So, I wanted to intercede here in this discussion. If you were to pass this ordinance as-is tonight, moving forward with the idea that in two weeks or maybe sooner, you wanted to have a meeting specifically about the issue of the religious issue and the preachers in the churches, I can provide some assistance. I'm not going to issue a moratorium, but one, we haven't had any complaints and had to have the officers go out to any churches relative to the mask issue. But if we had, I can issue directions to the officers that until this issue is resolved by the commission over the next couple of weeks, not to take any enforcement action unless there is an extraordinary circumstance that we wouldn't be able to predict. So, if you were worried about potentially over the next couple of weeks some issue developing, we would be able to handle that, I think, sufficiently until you decided what you want to do. But I am asking you not to create a gap between the ordinances. Don't let it expire and have a three-day gap and then pass another one. I really object to that, creating confusion to the public and the police department's ability to enforce that. So, that was my effort to help you sort of get over that hump if you were concerned about that.
Okay, so in order not to do that, we...
So, procedurally, what I would recommend you do is probably develop a consensus on a date that is acceptable to you, and that can, you know, we'll move ahead on that. If you wanted to take action on that tonight, you would then need to make a motion for emergency action
Yes.
on that. And then following that, take a vote. I don't know if Carla has an ordinance number
I do have.
that would be ready, then we can have that. Then bring that ordinance to you essentially as presented with that date added, and then you could take action on that. But a couple stuff, I mean, I think you, I don't know if the March 31st date, if that consensus was arrived at or not, but I think that's the first role, and then...
Yes, March 31st.
Yes. So, we ask for a motion to emergency.
So, then I think you would now have ordinance number...
Yeah, so the first thing would be a motion to declare the ordinance an emergency to act on and waive second consideration.
Yes.
That would be your first one?
Mm-hmm.
And then the next one would be to pass ordinance, and the ordinance number would be 8158, and I believe with an expiration date of 11:59 PM on March 31st, 2021.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and make the first motion if you're ready, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve an emergency action to waive second consideration so we can take action tonight on a ordinance 8158. I know it's a little wordy, but making a motion to take this emergency action to waive second consideration so we can...
And you don't have to include the ordinance number at this time? You can do it in your next... I second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Please begin voting, Commissioner Wilson?
No.
Ms. Leonhardt?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Four to one. Okay, so anything else we need to talk about on this?
Now you need to vote on the ordinance.
On the ordinance.
Okay, that's right, that's the second one.
I'll make a motion that we
Thank you.
that we approve ordinance 8158. Is that sufficient?
8159.
8159.
8159. Is that sufficient or...
With the expiration date?
Expiration date of 31 March 2021.
At 11:59.
Okay. There is...
At 11:59 PM, right?
Yes.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Please begin voting, Commissioner.
Aye.
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 And I vote aye. Four to one. Okay, is that all we need to do on this topic? Thank you. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda, first consideration, ordinance rezoning 1440 to 1460 Quincy Street.
Julie Hurley, the Director of Planning and Community Development, will head this one. We also have numerous department heads here from Public Works, Police Department, myself, and Mr. Waters, if there's any questions.
And we have speakers too.
Yes, we do.
Public.
And we have the applicant here as well. We have the applicant, the developer here as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. As you said, this is a request to rezone property at 1440 and 1460 Quincy Street from R-19 Medium Density Single Family Residential to R-16 High Density Single Family Residential. This is two separate properties that are approximately 4.6 acres in total. So, the property is presently zoned, again, R-19, which would allow for lots meeting the minimum requirements of 9,000 square feet in size with 75 feet in width. The proposed zoning of R-16 allows for lots meeting minimum requirements of 6,000 square feet in size and 48 feet in width. So, there is a preliminary plat that was submitted with this. We do have that as an exhibit to show you as the layout that's being proposed with this. As part of this proposal, there are a total of 18 lots with an average lot size of 9,647 square feet and an average lot width of 62 feet. Largest lot in the proposed subdivision is 12,516 square feet, and the smallest lot is 8,185 square feet. There is an existing subdivision to the east of this that's very similar in nature and layout. That's the existing subdivision to the east has 16 lots and has a similar cul-de-sac layout. In that subdivision, the average lot size is 10,836 square feet, so they're just about 1,000 square feet larger per lot in the existing subdivision to the east. The Development Review Committee did review this project at their December 17th meeting and discussed a number of items mainly related to utilities, drainage, and improvements to Quincy Street. Utilities are available to the property and will require easements to be obtained from the properties in the east in order to connect to those. The grading on the lots as they are developed will need to direct drainage to the cul-de-sac that's developed and a stormwater system that would be designed and installed instead of directing drainage away from the properties to neighboring properties surrounding them.
Would you repeat that again?
Yep, so, as you probably know, one of the concerns that we've heard a lot is stormwater drainage, and it was just noted by staff during our review that any stormwater drainage would need to be directed from this property inward to a stormwater drainage system that would be designed instead of having it flow away from the properties onto adjoining properties.
Okay.
And then there were no concerns noted by police or fire departments with this proposal. So, again, staff has received concerns from neighboring residents mainly concerning stormwater drainage, increased traffic, and increased demand on electrical service. Public Works staff has reviewed the proposal and confirmed that any existing drainage issues that are experienced by neighboring properties will not be increased by the proposed development and would in fact likely be improved because, again, there would be the design and installation of a stormwater system to capture runoff from the subject property. Also, staff does not anticipate that there would be a substantial increase in traffic created by an additional 18 lots that are proposed with this development. We have also contacted Evergy regarding concerns that we've heard about electrical service, and we have been informed by Evergy that due to the way their electrical grids are designed and built, that electrical service for an additional 18 lots would have no effect on existing customers in the area. So, the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing for this item on January 4th and voted for to recommend approval of this. We have one resident that spoke in opposition to the request during the public hearing, and several others submitted written comments that are included in your packet, and I believe you have seen those. After the public hearing, a protest petition was submitted on January 15th, and that was reviewed by a city attorney and determined to be invalid. So, a similar request was proposed back in 2007 with essentially the same lot layout and rezoning request, and that was denied by the city commission at that time. So, in reviewing rezoning requests, there are a number of items that are required by state statute for us to consider. I typically don't go through these verbatim in these meetings since they're in your packet, but since we do have a number of members in the audience, I'll just go through those, just so everybody can hear the same thing. So, the first is the character of the neighborhood. The subject property is occupied by one single-family home. To the northeast and south are other single-family subdivisions with lots ranging in size from slightly smaller to slightly larger than those proposed as part of this development. To the west are several large lot residential parcels, each over three acres in size. The next is zoning and use of nearby properties. The immediately adjacent properties are zoned R-19 Medium Density Single Family Residential. Beyond the immediately adjacent properties to the north, east, and west are properties zoned R-16 High Density Single Family Residential. The property, or the northwest of the property is property zone RMF Multi-Family Residential, and the majority of surrounding properties are developed with single-family homes. The next criteria is the suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted. The subject property is currently zoned R-19 Medium Density Single Family Residential, and the property is suitable for single-family uses. The next criteria is the extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property. The proposed rezoning should have no detrimental effect on nearby property. Majority of concerns expressed to staff by neighbors regarding this proposal involve stormwater drainage that currently occurs from this property onto properties located to the east. The development of the proposed subdivision should positively impact any stormwater issues currently experienced as the developed loss will be required to direct stormwater runoff to the proposed cul-de-sac to be captured by the stormwater drainage system instead of directing stormwater runoff onto other properties. The next criteria is the length of time the subject property has remained vacant and zoned. The subject property has always been a single-family or vacant in nature. The next criteria is the relative gain to economic development, public health, safety, and welfare by the reduction of the value of the landowner's property as compared to the hardship imposed by such reduction upon the individual landowner. The proposed rezoning would have a positive effect on the economic vitality of Leavenworth by increasing the available housing stock. The next criteria is the recommendation of permanent or professional staff. Staff does recommend that the item be approved. The next criteria is the conformance of the requested change to the adopted or recognized comprehensive land use plan being utilized by the city. The subject area is identified as appropriate for medium-density residential uses, which is defined as 6,000 to 9,000 square feet of lot area per dwelling unit. This proposed development provides an average of 9,647 square feet of lot area per dwelling unit as shown on the plat that you've got up there, and that, so that would conform to the adopted future land use map being used by the city. And then the final factor is any other factors that may be relevant to a particular proposed amendment. The factors considered in taking action on the proposed amendment shall be included in the minutes or otherwise be made part of the written record. There are no other factors of note.
Okay.
So, again, I can answer any questions. Public Works Director is here, Police Chief is here. We do have some members of the public who wanted to speak. I know that we had gotten some written comments that the city court had distributed, and then we had a couple that the senders had requested that they be read
Okay.
into the record, so I would guess that I can probably do that when we start the public comment period.
Okay. We're ready to read the public comment?
Yes.
Can we hear the written comments first, please?
Sure.
Okay, whoever wants to read.
Who's gonna read?
I have the time.
Do you want to do the applicant first or the comments first?
Let's do the comments first.
Okay. Same two minutes as well?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay, the first is from Kevin Shavy, located at 1204 South 15th Street. Dear Sir Madam, in reference to Sylvia's Meadow Case 2021-01, we oppose rezoning the property. My wife and I have lived at 1204 South 15th Street for 40-plus years. My wife and I helped to pay for the pavement that was laid down on the gravel on 15th Street as it was a gravel road when we moved here. My wife and I have watched this neighborhood develop to the south and east of us by Larry Patterson. Nice, well-constructed homes on appropriate-sized lots. Concern number one. For many years, the power to our house was off and on, off on so many occasions as I assumed the grid was overloaded, monthly outages if not weekly. Until after many years, 20 years or so, it was finally upgraded. Concern number two. Our water pressure was reduced for many years until they replaced some of the main water lines finally just two summers ago. Concern number three. The added traffic on our street. Speeding coming from the area to our west heading east on Quincy is already a real problem. We expect nothing less from the additional traffic coming from a new subdivision, which leads to concern number four. This entire area receives a lot of foot traffic with pedestrians walking their dogs. Narrow streets, no sidewalks, people walking pets. We fail to understand the logic that would allow 22 homes into this property that is similar to the cul-de-sac subdivision, property just to the east on 14th Street that has 16 homes. Why place 22 homes into what should be a 16-home subdivision? Surely, 16 nice homes on proper-sized lots would be valued more than 22 homes on small lots. Is this going to set a precedent for the day development is done to the area?
Surely, just real quickly, it's not 22 homes, is it?
No, it's 18.
Okay, just want to make sure that's clear.
And this will be entered into the official record in entirety. Okay? Okay. The next one is from Clarissa Schneider at 1316 South 15th Street. It has come to my attention that a petition that was signed by me and several of my neighbors in opposition of this rezoning was ruled invalid. While I do not know why it was ruled invalid, I did see the need for such a document based on the current situation brought on by COVID and the inability to come to the meetings in person. I understand that only the property owner and developer were allowed at the last meeting. Since you did not recognize the petition, I will state the obvious. My husband Jim and I oppose this rezoning for a multitude of reasons. Here are a few. We have resided at 1316 South 15th Street for over 36 years. This street has been a much-traveled thoroughfare between Quincy and Ohio. The next closest thoroughfare would be Washington. We saw a dramatic increase in traffic when the housing cul-de-sac on 14th Street was built. Many vehicles coming from 10th Avenue chose to come down Ohio and cut across 15th Street to get to Quincy versus just taking Quincy because there are no stops until they get to the corner of 15th and Quincy. Quincy has at least three stop signs. In recent years, it has also become a thoroughfare for the Leavenworth District school bus route, so we see buses driving on it in the morning and again after school. The portion of 15th Street between Quincy and Kansas is quite narrow and has no curbs, unlike 15th between Kansas and Ohio, which is wider and has curbs. We are concerned about the increased number of vehicles that will use this street while developing this property into a high-density district, and we are also concerned with the increased traffic once there are significantly more permanent residents in the area. It was our understanding that prior to when we moved here, there was a discussion to not widen the street because of the mature trees that would have to be removed. Because the street is narrow, there are portions that are questionable if two vehicles traveling in opposite directions can safely pass. And again, this will be entered into the record and its entirety.
Okay. Is that it?
Those are the, yeah, those are the only two that I have.
Okay. Anyone in the public want to hear from the neighbors? Yes, sir. Want to come to the microphone, give your name and address, please?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak to you all. My name is Robin Hasek. My wife Lucy and I have lived at 1324 South 15th Street for the past 19 years. Up front, we and many of our neighbors in the surrounding blocks are opposing any construction at the proposed site commonly recognized as 1440 and 1460 Quincy. There was a petition signed by many of us and it's my understanding that it was summarily rejected by the city attorney. While the intent is still there, whether it was rejected by the attorney or not. I attended and spoke the planning commission virtual meeting held on January 4th. I was the one speaker able to navigate the virtual experience. It was difficult, if not possible, to hear the discussion. It was terrible. I find it questionable that who are believed to be the developer and the landowner were the only two people allowed physically to attend that meeting, no one else. As pertains to the rezoning issue, as it was reiterated several times during the virtual meeting, with the R16 high-density zoning, the developer plans to add only two additional houses for a total of 18, even though they could add up to 22. If it's only about two additional houses and not six more, then why all the struggle and why not just run with current 16 allowed under the R19? In my humble opinion, a seller, no matter who, is conditioned to telling a listener anything that listener needs to hear in order to achieve the desired goal. Our fear, once the rezoning has come to fruition, is that plans get changed and townhomes or other cheap housing gets built and packed into this proposed cul-de-sac to the detriment of the surrounding property values, along with an unreasonable and unsafe increase to vehicular traffic in the area and subsequent safety of the family in that area. On Quincy, from Madison Street west to South 14th Street cul-de-sac is 300 feet approximately. From South 14th Street cul-de-sac west to Patterson Street is approximately 150 feet. From Patterson Street west to South 15th Street is approximately 300 feet. Somewhere in between Patterson and South 15th Street will be a single point of interest and egress for the newly proposed cul-de-sac. We'll assume similar configuration at the South 14th Street cul-de-sac. In an approximate 750-foot length of Quincy Street, whether it's in its current condition as a broken asphalt two-lane residential street with no curbs, no sidewalks, no drainage, or a newly paved street.
Can you conclude, please, real quick?
We will have five intersecting streets, of which two will be dead-end cul-de-sacs. That's a ridiculous proposal for the neighbors living in the area to have to deal with.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Quick question?
My name is Kenneth Thimmler-Master.
You're good, you're good, you're good, you're good.
Yes, sir.
My name is Kenneth Thimmler-Master. I've resided at 1118 South 14th Street. I've resided at that residence for the last 26 years. The statements that are made in the zoning and planning commission that they don't think that this won't have a residual effect on anything east of that property, to say the least, is inaccurate. The property itself, and if you can put the plat up, I'll explain it to you. I guess evidently, no.
He's working on it.
Okay. Should be like Congress and ask for restoration by minutes? Okay. Water from this property, on our property, flows from this corner to this residence in an angle like this.
Mr. Thimmler-Master? Mr. Thimmler-Master, can you grab that mic by hand and come up to this, this one, so we can?
I can't see your point in that.
Okay. There, there, that's better. Thank you.
Water from, in our cul-de-sac runs from this property here, which is Brian Hamilton's, to this area here in an angle that is not affected by this property here. So, this property, when you follow the plat, is going to connect to a tube in the backyard of 1106 South 14th Street. As you know, I've sent several of you photographic evidence, as far as video evidence, of all that water that runs through that area. Once that water leaves this tube, it goes through across our property, across our property into South 14th Street, or I'm sorry, into Washington, or Madison Street, and continues forward east. I can stand here and tell you statistics all day long. The 1,400-square-foot house will shed 600 gallons of water in one inch of rainfall. 16, 18 houses add that up. It's all going to go into a catch basin that goes through the backyard of 1106, plus our water that goes through that same system, flows eastward. What is the problem at 910 Washington Street is going to be exacerbated by all of this water?
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay. Is there someone else who'd like to speak? Name and address, please?
Terry Costa Mingo, 1451 Quincy. I'm directly across the street.
I'm here at the other map.
I have a few concerns. Number one, the technical difficulty that we encountered trying to get into the planning and zoning was absolutely impossible. Could not hear the meeting. We were all even trying to type in. No one would, we couldn't open our mics, so therefore we could not participate. This ended up a virtual meeting after numerous ones of us emailed the planning commission. Also, there has not been a final plat presented yet. It is not due until January 29th. I see no reason to make a decision without a final plat. There's electrical, water, everything has not been resolved. Final plat. Also, we were not given a reason that the petition was denied. Anybody got?
I'll address that. What else do you have?
The petition that we used.
I understand. What else do you have? We'll ask about that.
The only other thing I'm asking is, there is a wide variety of large plots of land all around us that could also be rezoned. Why is not a special permit use being used here? The chances of this rezoning being used in other pieces of property on over that are at least 10 acres, five and a half, we don't need that.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, anybody else want to speak from the public? Okay? Oh, yes, sir.
Well, I spoke once. I had a short comment to make on the discussion I had with Energie today.
Come up to the mic.
Come up to the mic, please.
Okay. I called Energie today, and my request to them revealed 12 outages at my property in 2018. Three in 2019, five in 2020, and one so far this year for my address. The reasons listed were primarily cars hitting utility poles and squirrels. This is in our neighborhood. The one with no curbs and no sidewalks and narrow streets and bad drainage. This cul-de-sac is going to help us out.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
Mr. Hoppus. Mr. Hoppus.
Okay, I'll hear from the developer now, Mr. Hoppus. Please come forward and give your name and company, which I know already, but.
Different company. Josh Hoppus, representing LBH Development, which is the proposed developer for this property and the applicant on this request. My address is 16208 Gilman Road, Leavenworth County. I don't want to bury the lead here. We're talking about two additional lots. So, we can currently develop this property under the current R19 zoning with 16 lots. We are asking for two additional lots. Why is that important? The focus of this effort, the reason we're even doing this, is try to bring more affordable housing stock to Leavenworth City. While we appreciate the efforts of other developers going on, those are mostly at a much higher price point. Our focus here is to bring new housing stock in at a lower price point. And it's unfortunate that that means we're still talking about $275,000, but that's a lower price point in the, in the current environment. Yeah, I know. I understand completely, but, so yes, two lots, which represents basically 11%. That's a, that's a huge difference in terms of how this, how the financial feasibility of this project works and what we can do to pass those savings along to eventual homeowners. To address some of the issues here, power, I believe Energie's already addressed. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it. And again, we're not talking about the development 16. We're talking about the difference between 16 and 18. Will that have a difference in stormwater? Will that have a difference in power? Will it have a difference in traffic counts? Our contention is negligible. It's not going to. What it's going to have a difference in is our ability to execute on what we want to do. We are running a plat subsequent with this. I'd ask you to look at the plat again. I think we walked a really fine line here. You know, we, we came in with lots that are slightly narrower, but still excellent-sized lots for the, for the price point of these homes. We're talking about an average lot size of 9,000, almost 10,000 square feet. That's bigger than most of the lots in Westland. So, these are not quote-unquote "small" lots. These are, these are reasonably-sized, good lots that are going to make great home sites for new homes in the price point we're looking to get to. That's the point of this. That's why we're trying to do it. I'd direct you to, I'll address one specific comment that was in writing. Mr. Mingo, I believe, is in the audience here. Said, "I was involved in the first attempt to rezone in 2007. That attempt failed, and I have seen no improvement or change to the property. In fact, it has gone downhill since that time." The structure that's on the property now is basically gone from very poor to uninhabitable, which we're actually going to remove that as part of this process. So, yes, that's exactly right. Because the first request was denied, this property has gone from bad to worse because it wasn't financially feasible for the previous donor. That's why we're back here. That's why we're going through this process. If 16 lots made sense, we wouldn't be bothering with this whole deal. But we're here tonight because in order for us to execute on what we want to do, which is bring more affordable housing stock to Leavenworth, this is what we need. We need 18 lots here. And I'll answer any questions.
Well, I think that the, the deal is here. It is just, I mean, all of these comments about negatively impacting the neighborhood, I mean, we wouldn't even be talking about this if we were talking about two less houses. So, basically, we're talking about two houses here, correct?
Correct. And I understand is that, you know, from a, as a not-developer, it's like two houses, what's the difference? Just go, just go with 16 and move on. I understand. I completely understand the sentiment, but the difference is 11%. When you're talking about two houses in a total of 18, when your fixed costs are the same, the street costs the same, the curves cost the same, everything costs the same, 16 to 18. If we can break that up over, over 18 lots, that improves our ability to execute on the affordable bargain.
The impact on the neighborhood is not going to be appreciably different from 16 to 18, is what I'm saying, the impact on the neighborhood.
Our contention is no.
Mr. Hoppus, are you going to curb and gutter that cul-de-sac?
We're curbing and guttering that, and as our understanding, we're curbing and guttering Quincy Street as well. So, that's another portion of this. We're going to make improvements to the, to the street coming into our subdivision to match what was done in the, the mats not up here, but the 16-lot subdivision directly to the east of us, which I believe Ms. Larkin did. We're going to do the exact same thing, which is basically overlay and curb and gutter Quincy Street in front of our subdivision.
Yeah, they're required to improve the portion of Quincy that's adjacent to their property.
Okay, okay.
But would it extend to the current subdivision that's been there for 25 years or not?
You can grab the mic and go up to the map. Come up to this map, we don't want to point.
So, we're only going to go from here, which is the, which is the eastern boundary, the southeastern boundary of our property line, to the, to the southwestern boundary of our property line, which is what we would be required to do by the city, as we understand it.
So, you're going to improve that road there?
Correct.
And you're going to sidewalk it?
Correct.
Okay. I believe Public Works. Our Public Works Director has requested a sidewalk along their portion of Quincy.
I hesitate because I had questions about a sidewalk to nowhere, but I understand that that's what we're going to do.
Well, that's one of the things that, I mean, we understand the narrowness of this decision, and I support the rezoning to go to 18. And I, because I support growth, population growth, affordable housing for residents, so this city can keep growing and keep revitalizing itself. But I do understand the concerns of the people in the current subdivision. I think it's South 14th Street, correct? South 14th Street to the property directly to your east, particularly in terms of stormwater, and I know that's, so when you submit this final plat, you and the person who's going to be doing the development, what can you tell us about stormwater? Because stormwater drainage is a problem in this area. So, maybe you could, is it going to get worse for the subdivision on South 14th Street? Do you think, or?
Well, I can only address what our property is going to do. So, in my, my requirements, I can't develop that property and just dump my stormwater on the adjacent property under. That's not, that's not allowed. So, we're going to have to take all of our stormwater, based on calculations, some of the calculations that were referred to here, take it underground to catch basins and get it off. And we are going to connect to the existing stormwater underground, which is immediately to the east as part of the development, which is, would be reviewed by Public Works and would go through that whole process. But yeah, you're, so you're, you're talking about taking stormwater that is currently raw ground above grade and taking it underground in catch basins, controlling it, and directing it to the existing stormwater infrastructure that's available.
Is Mr. McDonald, is he? Is he online or is he physically here?
He's online.
I guess my question, Mr. McDonald, can you explain, can you talk stormwater a little bit? Oh, there you are.
There he is.
And you know he's there.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Just a second, we've got a black hole.
The, the stormwater that is.
Are you okay, Mike?
Yeah, that's good. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Commissioners, the stormwater system that has been proposed for the new development is well within the guidelines of what would be expected for modern stormwater systems. A citywide stormwater evaluation was done many years ago and did not identify that the existing system on the next subdivision to the east has any fundamental problems. In fact, the, the developer at the time built that detention basin to ensure that there was no further issues created downstream. We have looked carefully at the existing channels. As you go downstream to Washington Street, the creek is not eroded. There are no exposed roots of trees. There is no reason to believe that the water that comes off this new subdivision will fundamentally impact that. However, we will continue to port them. We will review the design as it comes in, and we will also continue to monitor the downstream properties, at least to Washington Street.
Are you saying, Mr. McDonald, okay, I understand that with respect to this property that is in front of us tonight for the rezoning. But are we, I mean, we've, we've seen, we've, Mr. Thimmler-Master sent us some videos, and, and there does seem to be a lot of stormwater running along three or four of those houses in the current subdivision on South 14th Street. So, I, I know that's not, it's, it's just come to our attention as a result of this rezoning action. I'm just, I put myself in the, in the shoes of our residents who live there, and if that is, in fact, is what is happening, what could we do in the longer term to identify, it seems to me to be a problem? So, I don't know. What can you tell me about that? I think by the evidence that I've seen, there's a problem.
Mayor Commissioners, I can say that the current stormwater system that comes between 1104 and 1106 on 14th Street, if you look in your policy report, I believe it's about page 46, you can probably see why the water does not, why the water ponds up there. Pages 46 and 47, they have essentially blocked it off with a grate, so the water is going to pond there. It's also worth noting that the lots on the existing subdivision are intended to run north and south for the water to enter the, run through a squail through the backyards and enter into the stormwater system at the location between 1104 and 1106, South 14th Street. oh six, South Fourteenth Street. That is the way it was designed, and that is, appears to be the way it's generally operating. If you look at some of the other videos that were provided, the water on nine hundred block of Washington, I was not told that that property actually flooded. There's a lot of water that gets in there. That was a creek. That creek has been filled about three and a half to five feet over the years, and a small channel remains. But the, the, there's not a history of damage other than the standing water out there, and it may stay there for some time after a big storm. And our, our evaluation of the existing system is it seems to be working as it was intended to be.
I think our city attorney would like to...
Yes, thank you. David Waters, City Attorney. I just, before we get too far down, you know, some of these future roads on, you know, actual construction and such, I do want to remind the commission that what you have before tonight is a land use decision on that. And Ms. Hurley spoke through the eight factors. And so, I just, these discussions are fine, but I do want to remind the commission that at the end of the day, as you're discussing it and, and making your motions, considerations as to approval or disapproval, that you want to do that in light of the factors that are set out in the report, and that it's good to build a record to support either decision based on, on those types of factors. And so, I don't want to get too far down. A discussion where a vote on a land use matter is dependent on what would come down the line at a permitting process or things like that, but make sure that your decision, either yes or no, is taken into consideration of the factors as they have been presented to you tonight, or your own individual take on those factors.
Okay.
Well, I, I appreciate that, but I, but I understand that, but, and I, you know, I'm not, I don't know. I, I think we've got a very robust stormwater program that's been in effect for two years. We have a, a fee that we, that our homeowners in the city pay, as long, as well as our business owners, and this will be the last thing I say about it. I think what we, what we've been told, what we've been provided by some of our residents, particularly on South Fourteenth Street, that it, we should take a look going forward in terms of whether what's happening there is acceptable. And if it's not, maybe there's some things the city can do with respect to improving the stormwater situation, drainage situation in that area. That, I know Mr. Hoppus and his developer are going to do the right things with respect to the stormwater there, but these things aren't black and white. There, you know, there's shades of gray. And my big thing is the, the stormwater situation with the existing residents, particularly in the, on South Fourteenth Street. So, that's what I'll say. I support the, I will support when we have a motion to approve the, the rezoning.
Okay. Any, anything else? Any other questions, Mr. Hoppus, or, or anybody in the room? Thank you, sir.
Ms. Hurley, you did say in your report, Claudia and I read it, but PD or the Police Department has evaluated traffic in that area?
Yeah, and I think Chief Kitchens is still around somewhere up.
Yes, he's here.
Oh, he's various.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, I've learned one thing in thirty years. You don't argue with the neighbors who live out there about their accuracy of the traffic. I'm not arguing that. And I never tell people that there's never any speeding or there's never any wrecks. But in terms of evaluating it, we looked at the data. We haven't had any wrecks that we could find in the last couple of years in that stretch of intersections that have been reported. We haven't had any complaints lodged about speeding. There may be some, but we haven't received any complaints about that, nor issued any citations in that area in the last several years. So, in terms of that, we did do that evaluation of it. I drove out there by Ms. Turner's house, certainly acknowledged that the street that runs north-south there on Sixteenth Street is very narrow comparatively speaking, but it was our assessment that a majority of the traffic that would go into the new subdivision would be either leaving or coming from Tenth Street, and probably would not likely leave and go in another direction, certainly not the majority of traffic. And so, we didn't find it to be some significant issue that would be overly burdensome.
I'll, I'll ask the question, Chief, and it doesn't, like I say, pertain specifically to, you know, the rezoning from sixteen to eighteen. But, I mean, would there be something that you could do, possibly plan for the future in terms of an overall safety evaluation or assessment of the, of the, of the roads out there? Not tomorrow or next week or anything, but I, I think it's a concern, but, you know, it's just the way the city developed, and I'm, I'm concerned about pedestrians and... I would say the same thing about sidewalks. Maybe our sidewalk committee, I know we're spending less money each year on sidewalks, but, because we've allocated that money to roads, but maybe they could look to, you know, as part, at least consider the possibility of some sidewalks, you know, that would extend further, further east. So, I just want to look at this more broadly, not to affect this particular decision tonight, but I hear the citizens, I hear the residents, and I'd just like to do the right thing in the, in the medium for the long term.
So, the answer to that question is yes. We're always paying particular attention, especially when there's new development, new houses. We'll give that particular attention. The city's Traffic Safety Committee is always evaluating, for example, the new stuff that's going into Twentieth and Eisenhower. We're paying attention to that. Any new subdivision, new, new expansions like that, we're giving particular attention for a while to see how things settle in, and if it's a problem, we'll, we'll address it from the police department's perspective, either with enforcement, if necessary, particular attention with our traffic union, that sort of thing. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, the main thing here is that we're, we're looking at a change because of two houses. And so, I would, if, unless anybody has any other questions, I'd like to move on with that.
We need a...
A motion. If you, if you have a motion or if you have any more discussion on this.
First consideration.
This is, but it says motion and consensus.
Well, if you weren't going to do a consensus to move it forward, then you had some other options. If you wanted to send it back to the Planning Commission, so it would have been a motion.
Oh, right, right, okay.
But if you're good with it, then it would be a consensus to move it forward.
And this is only the first consideration, so we can always come back to it. So, for the first consideration, is there a consensus to move forward with this?
Yes.
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 No.
Okay. I hope yes. We're talking about two houses, and I, we wouldn't even be talking about this at all if it wasn't for the two houses. So, I'd say yes, myself. So, I'm ready to move on with it.
About a minute, we can take like three minutes. Restroom.
Yes, sir. Can we take a...
Better do at least five.
Five.
On the agenda, now I have the mayor's appointments. Just a second.
I'll be down here.
I move to reappoint to the Convention and Tourism Committee, Sherri Brown, Wendy Scheit, Edna Wagner, Lisa Weekly, to terms ending January thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Wait, I'm not finished.
Oh.
And appoint Shirley Dixon to a term ending January thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and please begin voting. Commissioner Griswold?
Aye.
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 And I say aye, too, so it's five, five to zero. Thank you very much. And thank you to those who are volunteering for that.
Definitely.
Definitely.
Yep.
Okay. Consider updates to the city fee schedule.
Our city clerk, Carla Williamson, will handle this item?
Madam Commissioner, this is just a request to update some items in the city fee schedule. The first one is the small cell facility fees. This was discussed at last week's study session on January nineteenth, and these are fees that are consistent with the ones in the metropolitan area, and they've been adopted by cities such as Overland Park, Prairie Village, Westwood, and others. So, we've added those fees, or those fees, if you approve, will be added. One thing that was not in the policy report is, there should have been an asterisk, there is an asterisk there, and there should have been a footnote at the bottom, which kind of explains, that will read, "The FCC issued a declaratory ruling on September twenty-seventh, twenty-eighteen, with WT docket numbers seventeen dash seventy-nine and seventeen dash eighty-four, in which FCC seeks to limit attachments, franchise, and other small cell right-of-way access fees to the reasonable approximation of a local jurisdiction's cost or processing applications and managing deployment in the right-of-way. But, then also establishes a safe harbor annual fee of two-hundred-and-seventy dollars to site, twenty-two dollars and fifty cents per month. The city disputes the FCC authority to establish such fee limitations and notes several jurisdictions have filed legal challenges to the FCC ruling. Given the statute, until and unless a court of competent jurisdiction issues a final non-applicable order vacating FCC ruling or its fee limitations, a provider may opt to pay the city only two-hundred-and-seventy dollars per year, per site, twenty-two dollars and fifty cents per month. Towards these fees marked with the same asterisk, provided the first fees, in writing that in the event the FCC ruling or the fee limitations are vacated without any further appeal, the provider shall pay any outstanding balance for said fee within sixty days thereof." And I had to read that because I left it out.
I'll try to put it this way. So, we have been, a number of city attorneys I've been working with have been establishing what appropriate fees for these types of small cell facilities are. After establishment of some of those fees in other jurisdictions, the FCC, the FCC ruled that fees above a certain amount were probably not permissible. We have, that has been challenged. All of that is still pending. So, what this fee ordinance does is it charges, puts in the fee schedule, the higher fee with the asterisk that says, until this is all settled out, any people that are required to pay this fee, we will allow them to pay the lower safe harbor fee, provided that if the FCC ruling is overturned, that higher fee kicks in. But what we don't want to do is establish the lower fee in the fee schedule, because then we can't go higher, so it establishes the higher with the asterisk, so that if that higher fee is deemed reasonable, that would be the applicable fee. If that higher fee is deemed not appropriate, then we have the provision built in place already to charge the lower fee in accordance with the FCC standards.
That makes sense. Thank you.
So, there's those fees that you'll be considering, and then the other ones are to the Parks and Recreation Department, some updates and amendments to those. One of, a few of them are just, and I'll read through them quickly. We want to remove the fee for the gazebo at the three-hundred block of Delaware. That structure has been demolished, so that's no longer there. All the campground fees, these are fees that have always been in effect. Just when we did the schedule of fees, they didn't get put in, so it was kind of a review that Parks did and said, we need to put those in. So, those fees will go into the, the fee schedule. Remove water safety instructors, scuba, and synchronized swimming courses, as those are no longer offered. Remove the fourteen to eighteen teams, Geiger, Mary, Haldwood, and those, those leagues are no longer offered, so we'll remove those. Change bittyball age three to six, K-six, third child late registration from thirty dollars to forty-two fifty. This isn't really changed. It was, they gave me the, the wrong information was put in, so we're just correcting. They've always charged the forty-three fifty, so...
Okay.
Same thing with the one below it. That was just an error in the fee schedule. There really isn't a change to it. Remove the men's basketball late registration. They no longer accept late registrations. Change the fee from forty-five dollars to forty dollars on the...
Footso.
Footso?
Yeah.
What is that?
Footso. It's basically indoor soccer.
Oh, okay.
A version of indoor soccer. So, that one, again, was one that they looked at and said, oops, that was in there wrong. Same thing on the late, the charge for the late fee. That is going to be updated. And then the seasonal passes for the performing arts centers. Again, those are fees that have always been in, in effect. We just didn't have them in the fee schedule, so we are going to put those in there. And none of these fees, you know, affect anything having to do with the scholarship program that the Parks Department does. That's still in effect. I talked to Steve Grant, the Parks and Recreation Director, and he said that, that's still a very, you know, good program they have. They have plenty of funds. Most everybody who's given that scholarship, they, they have, it's enough to cover, you know, each child for the season. They might have a situation where they have a child that, you know, signs up for a lot of, of different events, and they might run a little low, but, for that child. But for the most part, it's, that scholarship works well for everybody and covers all the child's fees with you. So, if the commission is in approval of that, this would become effective tomorrow, January twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a question on the campground fees, and you may have covered this, Ms. Williamson, is there's no, there's no change, we're just putting them in the fee schedule, but has there been any increase in the camper site with electricity fee?
No, no. All these are the, what the, the fees have been for quite some time. We're just getting them put into the, the fee schedule.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? If not, is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the city fee schedule as presented.
A second. We moved in second, and please begin voting. Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
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 Can I vote out five zeros? Okay. Next item is consider approval of city sidewalk cost share program guidelines.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, in December, we spoke about changing some of the reimbursement rates for the sidewalk cost share program to further incentivize increasing the quality of sidewalks throughout the community. It had been a number of years since those reimbursement rates had been changed. At that meeting, we talked about doubling the rates essentially on the residential reimbursement, up to five dollars per square foot, and the commercial reimbursement, up to ten dollars per square foot. And that is based on costs in the field and changes over time. Along with that, and the reason that it took a little bit longer to get this back to you is we went ahead and updated and really clarified the program guidelines. So, you'll see that as an attachment in your packet. It begins on page eighty-four of your packet, and this will be posted on the city's website, and this is where we will direct those inquiring about the sidewalk cost share program. But the, the headline is the doubling of the rates of the residential and commercial reimbursement on sidewalk cost share.
Okay. Any, any questions or comments? If not, entertain a motion.
I move to approve the increase in reimbursement for sidewalk replacement completed within the program guidelines, fifty slash fifty cost share to five dollars per square foot for residential, and ten dollars per square foot for commercial.
A second.
We moved in second, and please begin voting. Commissioner Griswold?
Aye.
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 And I vote aye, five zero. Okay, next item on the agenda, consider approval of a change order, number one, Thornton Street Project.
Our Public Works Director, Mike McDonald, will handle items number eight, nine, and ten, and he should be appearing on the screen in just a minute.
Okay.
Mike?
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor, Commissioners. Hello?
Yeah.
Okay. Gotcha.
You're kind of going...
All right, we'll continue on, I guess.
Sure.
Yes.
I am here with, with Mike Stephen. I am, I am here with Mike Stephen of our office, who coordinated much of the day-to-day coordination and inspection work on, on the Thornton Street project. And the project is, is done at this point, and we're basically gathering up all the loose ends and bringing to the commission as a, as a change order for a variety of things that we dealt with as we went over the course of this five-million-dollar project over almost two years. I wanted to highlight some of the key issues that are in this change order. The first is what we're calling the overexcavation of wet subgrade. This is in locations of the project where we found that the soil was too wet to hold up the vehicles, and we had to dig out the extra dirt and put back additional field grit and gravel. There's two pictures on that page. Taylor, if you want to scroll down to the second picture, it's a, it's a two-page document, so there's a, there's a second page below this first one here, are just some representative pictures of that, that we use to work closely with our engineer, and we worked with contractors to have cost-effective solutions, and we were able to effectively stabilize this in all cases that we found. There are some maps also that we can show, highlighted in yellow, that show how, where we generally found this problem. It was not everywhere. It was fairly localized, although some of the areas were... It was fairly localized, although some of the areas were fairly substantial. So if you wanted to show one of the, some of those areas, kind of the map of the, of the locations. But that ultimately ended up being fairly substantial work that we did for about $160,000. We also found some ancient infrastructure, which was a storm sewer pipe that ran off the school district property. It ran to the northeast under Thornton and daylighted into the ditch. This was something we didn't know existed. It, here's a, here's one of the maps. The yellow represents areas where we found the poor soil conditions and to identify where we did this additional work. There's a, there's a second page in there that may or may not have, but... It was maple? Yeah. It was basically maple down the hill to Fifth Street, similar portion of that. Very long-term repair. We expect this roadway to hold up. There we go. Thank you. And if you remember, we were scrambling to get the road open at the, at the end of the winter, or end of summer, late fall of last year, so we could drive north and south on it. Over the winter, we were able to successfully do that with, using these techniques. There was a stormwater pipe that we found. Even if we had known about it, we wouldn't have been able to use it. It was in the wrong place and the wrong size. So rather than pay to dig it up and remove it, we exposed it and refilled it with a lean concrete mixture of flowable fill. That was the time-sensitive part of the project, and that allowed us to keep on working. We also had a variety of other things that some, we were able to save some money on, some cost us more money. Everything from traffic control to miter adjustments to some of the large box culverts. We were able to eliminate storm sewer inlet box by using existing systems, property that we had acquired. Same with sanitary sewer manhole. It would have created more problems to replace it than to keep it, and since it was in fair shape, we decided we would just keep it. And ultimately, at, at the end of the day, all the pluses and the minuses added up to $272,899.42, which was about 5.6% of the original contract bid. We're actually quite proud of this number. It was a very large project, and the value of the change orders, we were disgusted internally before we proceeded with them, and I believe the value is well within guidelines and our expectations for contracts of this type. We would ask that the city commission ask questions that you may have. Approve the change order number one.
Any questions?
I have a comment, Madam Mayor. No question, Mr. McDonald, but kudos to you, your staff, the contractors for the job. It's, it's, it's outstanding. It needed to be done for years and years, and I know we were down for 18 months or so, but well worth it, and I'm sure it's going to stand the test of time. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
No, is there? Thank you, Mike. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve approval of contract change order number one with KISAT construction in an amount not to exceed $272,899.42.
Second.
For a contract total... One moment. One moment, please. For a contract total not to exceed $5,163,961.42.
Second.
Second. Sorry.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting. Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And I vote aye, five zero. Okay. Next item, Mr. McDonald. Consider bids water pollution control chemicals.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is our annual purchase of chemicals that we expect to use throughout the course of the year. There is a summary of uses in the policy report. Tim Gordato is on the call also, if you have questions of him or waste activities at the wastewater plant. The hydrogen chloride and the sodium hypochlorite, sodium hydroxide are all used in some, actually all, the first four, first three are all used in some manner for odor control, some for the wastewater coming into the plant and others in our processes. The polymer is a waugulating agent, kind of a fine turdery powder that gets used as part of the dewatering process to get the water out of the sludge. So we're taking sludge to the landfill and not a lot of water. We estimate the quantities that we will use each year and try to bid them all at once at the, at the first of the year, and we would ask that you approve the chemical bids that we've received collectively in an amount not to exceed $57,000.
Okay. Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just want to tell Mr. Gordato, I enjoyed watching that video of how our, how our water treatment...
Works.
Yeah, the wastewater treatment plant works. And it was on there for a while, but it was very informative, and I know some great work goes on out there, and I appreciate everything that he and his staff do for the city.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for making that comment. Any other comments, questions?
Aye.
Thank you. My, a motion? Any motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the bids for water pollution control chemicals as presented. Is that good enough, Ms. Williamson?
That's good.
I second.
If it's moved and seconded, please begin voting. Commissioner Wilson.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye, five zero. Thank you. Next item, water pollution control trickling filter, number three repairs.
Mike?
Mike, that's up to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you. I'm going to ask, Taylor, there's a short video of what exactly is it we're talking about that hopefully we'll play. We've already put up the quick look at the guts of what we're going to talk about, but I think the video explains why. And if we can't find it, then we'll go on, but it looks like we're heading the right direction. This is the top of trickling filter number three. It was built 12 years ago, and what happens is the water is pumped up to the top of this, and it pumps out the arms, and it rotates south. There's no electricity or anything you can do that, and it distributes the water over these holes you see in the pot, and then the water trickles down to the bottom. The theory is that the water is high in nutrients, this is nitrogen phosphorus, and it's, the algae likes that sort of thing, so the algae grows in these long tubes, ultimately reducing our, what they call biochemical oxygen demand, where the, if these nutrients were released into the, into the river, you would encourage algae growth, because they like to use those chemicals. We have three of these. This is the newest one, built 12 years ago. We replaced the mechanisms and such on the other two trickling filters a few years ago. However, this one showed up, failed here toward the end of last year. We'll show you some pictures of that. And if you want to see detailed pictures, I have lots of them, but I think the summary picture that we had up early, earlier would be the easiest one to talk from. And what it is is a request that the city commission approve, repair proposal from C and B, C and B Equipment. This picture is a combination of different things. The drawing on the left is the engineer drawing from, from the project showing the rotating structure. And if you look at the bottom, there's two, there's two metal parts on the center-right and bottom. Those two parts are supposed to be connected to each other. They, they basically support the rotating portion of the trickling filter, which is the upper yellow arrow, and every time that that starts or stops or changes speed, the pumps turn on and turn off, these pins that you see kind of take up a little torque. And we believe that degradation due to the environment has weakened the metal by erosion, and ultimately the certain stopping or the changing in volume has caused the metal to fatigue and caused it to fail. We approached the manufacturer for what it would cost to replace this part. Interestingly enough, the same manufacturer provided parts for the trickling filters one and two. They were made out of stainless steel. This was made out of, I believe, aluminum. We think there may have been an operational problem between the times that these were installed. They said it would take about six to eight months, and between, somewhere between, I think it was $98,000 and $130,000 to replace that. And we talked to, used to be known as Douglas Pump, but they're now part of C and B Equipment. They said they have replaced similar items from other manufacturers in the area successfully with multiple years upon similar failures, and their proposal is the $30,000 or $30,000 for a repair that we expect will last multiple years and will result in return to operation in probably less than 30 days and not matter of any time.
Sounds good. Any, any questions or comments for Mr. McDonald?
Nice presentation, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve, I move to approve the purchase and repair bid from C and B Equipment of $37,560.75.
Second.
If it's moved and seconded, please begin voting with Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
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 And I guess I said aye already. Okay. Five zero. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Is that all?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. The consent agenda.
I'm trying to gather my, so. I've moved to approve the claims for January the night, 2020, through January the 22nd, 2021, in the amount of $937,563.74. Net amount for payroll, number one effective, January 15th, 2021, in the amount of $353,226.48. No police and fire pension.
I second it.
Madam Mayor, a question. Should that be?
Yeah, that's what I was looking at.
I'd like to make a note that...
Yeah.
2021.
2021.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Please begin voting. Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
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 And I vote aye, five zero. Okay. How long are we going to need, do you think, in the executive session?
I think we settled on probably 25 minutes.
Okay. 25 minutes.
Remove everybody from not the executive session from this. We'll shut down the audio and the video, and we will do our executive session in the city's commission chamber.
Okay.
So we will reopen here at 9:35 would be the question.
9:35, okay. I move to recess. Is that okay if I move?
Yeah.
I move to recess from the executive session to discuss legal matters related to a petition pursuant to the consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, exception per KSA 754319. B2, the open meeting to resume in the city commission chambers at 9:35. City manager Paul Kramer and city attorney David E. Waters are requested to be present during the executive session.
I second.
A quick question. Is Mr. Tetter attending?
No, no.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting, Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
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 And I vote aye. We are in the executive session.
Okay. Let's go.
Not quite.
Careful.
Back in session. Okay. Any other comments from the commissioners tonight? Yes?
I just know Mr. Jamie Miller, the county health officer, will be updating the board of county commissioners tomorrow, I think primarily on the vaccination program, so...
I was going to mention that, so that's good.
Just a reminder to our citizens that they may want to tune in.
Tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock is when the commission...
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Yes, which Jamie will probably talk about tomorrow, but since I work for the Leavenworth County Council on Aging, we are partnering with the Leavenworth County Health Department in the sense of we have people 65 and older that may not have a computer, so they're unable to look at the website and sign a vaccine interest form, so they're welcome to call the Council on Aging. We will fill that form out for them, submit it to the Health Department for the vaccine. The Health Department will call and set them up an appointment. And Council on Aging also, as long as you live in Leavenworth County, will provide transportation at a fee of $1 round trip to get you from your house to the Health Department and back home for the vaccine. So I just wanted to put that out there, so please call the Council of Aging, 684-0777.
That's great information.
Sound like a hotline.
Well, I was going to think to do a jingle, but it's just not going to work.
Commissioner Wilson, anything?
May this prayer for peace for our nation and our community.
Amen. Thank you, sir. And I don't have anything, so we have a motion to adjourn.
Paul, you got something?
I'm sorry.
Oh, it's, it's just, I just wanted to share that we did get a certificate from the Census Bureau thanking the city of Leavenworth for our work. You know, I know Commissioner Griswold mentioned it every weekend as town hall in the commission. Thank you for your help getting the word out for the census.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, former mayor, for doing that.
Sure.
Okay. Do we have anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Waters, for being here with us.
Yes, thank you.
Carla, anything?
No.
Okay. Ms. Williamson, I'm sorry.
Oh.
And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh.
I second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Mr. Griswold.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Adjourned. Thank you.